motion being standing, motion carries. Right, I'd like to call for the public session to come to order, please stand for the saying of Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty then. New residents comments, they, I'd like to call for motion to accept the consensus agenda as submitted. Alright, any discussion, any item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion being standing, motion carries. Alright, I'd like to call for motion to accept the personnel report with an amendment that we add items eighteen and nineteen, eighteen to state the motion to change the title of Director of Technology and Learning to the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology Services effective immediately. And item nineteen, to add the position of Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction Technology Services effective July first, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a second? As we moved and seconded. If you can give those to Maureen, so she has the exact language. Alright, anything to discuss or go on separately?
Okay, item seventeen. Coach and extracurricular, the last item, modified cheerleading vote?
Yep. What's the question, I'm sorry?
Do we have a modified cheering program? But with modified sports, is it something new or something that was in there contractually before?
No, no, this would have been contractually before.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Why, you don't think there is? Is there, is there a misprint?
I think that we had a modified program for cheerleading in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, the past couple of years I know we have, because I can remember the issue involved in some of the modified girls not are being called up to do JV but not having enough unmodified for
That's right.
to actually have the team. Where there was, if they wouldn't have cut people from the JV team, they would have had enough to have both teams.
And I will do just a quick double check, just to make sure, but yeah. It didn't, it didn't strike me whenever I saw it at all, so, but doesn't mean you're not right.
Alright then, well, vote on items one through sixteen and eighteen and nineteen then right now? All those in favor of one through sixteen and eighteen and nineteen, please say aye. Aye, motion being standing, motion carries. And we'll hold off, I'll table with the vote for seventeen until we get an answer on that. Just to let, you know, my mic's not staying on either, even though me tapping it and then me talking into it, so. Just, just so you guys know, you might have to talk a lot louder. So, alright, Capitol Project Committee?
Yes, we had a meeting today. It was additional money that was left over from our previous projects and we had discussed today on a couple of options that we could do to utilize that fund. We ended up with approximately four items. One was infrastructure for Eric Road School. And that pretty much took up the bulk of it, the money was about two, well over two point two million. And that alone was about one point eight. We did have gym curtains that we were going to be installing instead of the doors. Came out to about forty-nine thousand. And it was a roof.
Correct, the A Wing.
A Wing.
High school A Wing.
High school A Wing, which actually currently has some leaks in it now, so. We felt that it's very important to get that squared away before it gets worse, so. The last one was some signage, but we're kind of weighing that, seeing where it all turns out, but the first three definitely will be a go.
Alright. Any questions of the Capitol Project Committee? Alright, for the Policy Committee, second reading and adoption. Policy sixteen forty-one absentee ballots and policy thirty-four twenty-one, which is Title Nine and Sex Discrimination. Since those are coming from a standing committee, I'm just going to call for a vote. All those in favor accepting the second reading and the next one of those policies, please say aye. Aye, motion being standing, motion carries. You have the Internal Claims Audit Report as an informational item there. Alright, Ex-Official Student Members Report.
Yeah, so, not much, I mean, it's been great, stuff, it's kind of nice. But, I guess, one thing that's been pretty good going on is a lot of like the seniors are like making their houses, everything's pretty cool. There's like an Instagram page that like started and like where they can like set in, whether going to school, what they're majoring in, or if they're going up into the military, or they can like that a trade, they can like share that, so that's pretty nice to see them, I feel like, um, figuring out what they're doing after high school and exciting. So that's good, and like one thing we're hoping to do is like do like on Easter Day, we can wear like anything, we're forgetting what you're gonna do after high school. In the beginning of May, and then maybe hopefully we can do like an event, it's a big success, that's kind of going on. Um, yeah, I'm like the senior, like that topic and stuff, I've been meeting, like talking about end of year stuff, like it's tough with everything going on and we're definitely a little frustrated sometimes, but you know, like, it's like twenty-one, just going on, so, kind of just hoping for the best, but really want like graduation and proud, so we're trying to come up with ways to get that going, so, yeah.
Can I jump in on graduation now, because I was gonna do that on the line?
Sure, yeah.
I don't know if this, is that working out?
Yeah, but you know, here's a funny thing about this, is that I'm hearing all of us talking through these speakers. So. No, no, I'm here when he talks. Go ahead, talk.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I'm hearing it in this speaker here.
It's coming through there?
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay, so some, some, some wire's wrong. The batteries were charged, so, they were all green. I'm just gonna talk really loud, because this is going from green to not green. Regarding graduation, we are meeting with the senior officers and advisors after the break next week to discuss some different options. You know, I think one of the, one of the challenges we're gonna face, and we're gonna try to be as creative as we can, is to find a way to solve two of the, what seem to be two of the pressing issues. One for our students, and that is our students want to find a way to all be together. Right, and then we've certainly heard that, so, trying to find a way to do that, knowing that as long as everybody's tested, we can bring five hundred people together, currently in New York State. The other piece is trying to find a way, because I think this is what we're hearing from, I know I'm hearing, from parents, is parents are interested in trying to find a way to see their kid get their diploma. So, how do we do both of those things, knowing that we can't have six hundred parents, three hundred students, nine hundred people together? Right, but is there a way to maybe do both of those things? We think we have some ideas, but I know the senior class officers have been talking quite a bit with their advisors, have a number of ideas. So we're gonna meet, we'll meet next week, listen to everything that they have, talk about what the restrictions are, and then the following week, it'll be our plan to kind of put together the plan. Okay, and so that we can, by the, we definitely want by the end of the month to roll something out, because I think it's most likely that the graduation date will be the twenty-sixth of June, the twenty-sixth of June. So we want to make sure that we have about two months lead time to build whatever it is that, you know, we create for the seniors.
And to make just a point, known again to reiterate this, our park is out, just, our park is set, they're not holding anything there.
Well, there's, there's no indoor activities, they're, they're not having indoor activities. You could have something outdoor there, with our facilities, I don't see that we would benefit from that at all. You'd still have the same number of people
Right.
that you can have in a gathering. So, and if, if we did something there, it would probably very much limit the multiple things that we might end up planning to do. But, again, well, we want to take as much information from our student leaders and, and, and staff leaders as we can, as long as they can fit underneath.
But the key thing is the stage portion of our park there is, is
Correct, they're not, they said they were not having anything indoors this year.
Okay.
That's right. That's all I have for now.
Anything else? Okay. Alright, Presence Report, just, you know, I, I know New York State School Board Association and a lot of the board presidents are still hoping that we hear something from our governor about changes to whatever, you know, how, one direction or another, what he's gonna do with his, the six or three feet. That is really where we are right now, and I know that from talking to fellow school board presidents, we're all equally frustrated. You know, we want to do, you know, if it's changing to three feet, we would like to begin that process of, of transitioning to possibly getting every kid back that we can. And right now, until that decision's made, we can't do that, and I think that's gonna bridge into a lot of things that you're gonna talk about right now, so we'll move over to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So, I know that many people believe, because they saw the CDC guidelines, that we've moved from six to three feet, we have not. Our state has not. And I would caution people to say, "New York State, please support all of the CDC guidelines as written", because there's certain things in those guidelines that are actually more restrictive than what we're even doing now. Okay?
Even with the change of three feet, it'd still be more restrictive.
Exactly, exactly. So, what we're hoping, and Mr. Sabre touched on it, is that our state will act on the six to three feet, but also make adjustments to the rest of the guidance documents, both the New York State Department of Health document and the New York State Education Department document. Those two documents need to change before districts can make changes. Just to give you an idea, we've already kind of looked at, planned for, if we move from six to three feet, could we do it? Our, could we bring everybody back at the secondary level? The two things that would be most difficult, okay, one is food service, but we could find a way. Okay, and the second one is busing. The busing restrictions in the CDC guidelines are more restrictive than what we're currently doing. We're currently putting one in every seat unless they're a family member. Okay? The CDC guidelines has written, the updated guidelines, skip a seat. So at the secondary level, absolutely, we'd have to have multiple runs, and just think about this for a minute. If, if they adopted all of what the CDC put out, what we're currently doing in elementary with every day would, would be in jeopardy. If they just took that whole document and, and, and absorbed it, that's why they haven't. Because they realize that it would change some of the things that we're already doing. So, again, I think one of the frustrations at this point for many people is the inaction. If the, the, if the action is going to be, we're not doing anything for the remainder of the year, tell people. If it's that we're going to do something for the last ten weeks and then something else at the beginning of next year, tell people. But everybody's just kind of waiting, and as we're now, you know, for us, the fourth quarter starts April nineteenth. We're close to the fourth quarter, we get into that fourth quarter, are we really talking about change at that point? Knowing that for high school kids, the last week and a half of the school year are Regents exams anyway? You know? So that, that's where we're at with the six to three, I, I just, I think it's really important, because I, I get it, not everybody's living this, and good for you, but the, I think a lot of people have seen enough about the six to three to think that it's something that's been adopted or is in place, and it's not. Any questions, comments, anything on that one? Because it's obviously a big one that we're all kind of waiting on. Our staff and high school students will be getting a survey soon from the Equity and Education Steering Committee. So that's gonna be coming out soon, but a lot of good work from that subcommittee, so the people will see that survey soon. The, we did submit paperwork for the Niagara County Youth Bureau for the Summer Food Service Program, okay? That is something that we asked all of you about, you, you supported, we're gonna do it again, very minimal cost to us to do something like that, so that's great news. The pilot that we ran for drop-off and pickup at ETMS really worked. Okay, and it was safer, and we believe that it's something we want to move forward with. We're not going to change back, because we believe it's that much safer, why would you change back and then put in place next year? The difference between now what we're doing and what it's gonna look like next year is that next year we'll have all the arrows and that sort of thing in place, because this, all of the parking lot here will be paved, it'll all be newly lined. There'll be arrows showing where, where people go, but the maps pointed people in the right direction, I think over the three days, people got used to it. I got to see it running on the Thursday, on that, that last morning, and it seemed to be running pretty smoothly.
Could you send the board members a copy of the map?
Absolutely, yeah. I'm going to, at the end of the meeting, just, I'll have this here for the, for board members regarding board recognition, John. We put something together, we have all the time slots, Jan and in my office, Dawn at the high school, they put together the, the, the times, so the students will get passes. They'll come down here and be able to get recognized, we'll do some quick pictures in front of the banners, they'll get certificates, a cookie, so it'll be pretty neat. It'll be a pretty nice thing. We're doing that on, we have two days, because obviously we have the, the hybrid situation going on still. So we have, I think it's the fifteenth and the sixteenth of next week. Okay? And there, there's times here, so if other board members, we just can't have four of you here at one time, are interested in doing like a few of the time slots, you could certainly jump in, come give a few of the certificates, get pictures socially distanced from the kids, and then we'll, we'll take all those pictures and we'll make a thing that we can throw up on the website too, and a nice thing for the kids to honor them. The fifteenth and sixteenth, yep. And you, you'll see the times here, they're, they're from, they range from like ten until a little after eleven on one day and ten until about eleven on the other. And then April twenty-first, we are gonna honor our, our, two of our January graduates, okay? Here at the board meeting. Any questions on board recognition? Under Old Business, currently there is an item there for the levy limit, okay, so setting the, the levy. I would like to also add to that just the expenditure budget. Okay, so after Allison and I present the budget tonight, ask any questions you want, I would like to add the expenditure budget to the Old Business, so both of those are acted on, so then we can start moving on the budget. Okay? And food service, just a reminder, breakfast and lunch every day, whether you're here in person or completely virtual. And that's all I have.
Any questions to Superintendent? Just the one thing I have, to go back into my report a little bit too, is, I say, we still have yet to hear anything about the federal waiver for state testing, they have not, have they enacted a New York State's, you know, special request?
I, no, I have not heard that they've heard from the federal government on that. That said, I think we're going to see, you know, many fewer students taking Regents exams this year and probably some of the other states' state exams, but especially the Regents exams, as of right now, though, we still have all of the Regents days in place. Boy, again, at this point, I mean, I'd be surprised if they changed that, but it's always possible.
I think it's more asinine thinking about the, the state testing for three through eight, with the, the, the lack of data you're gonna get from just giving one part of it, and, and it's just a waste of time in our regards.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, it'll, it'll give us one more data point, that's it. I mean, we, we have other data points that we have, right? So, you're right.
Do we have a lot of kids coming back to take it that are virtual?
Oh, I, they did put something, I don't know what those numbers are, I'm gonna guess they're gonna be slim to none. Yep, good question.
Alright. Alright, Finance Report.
That's us. Okay, so it's been an exciting twenty-four hours, let me say it that way. I think this is maybe the second or third year around that the budgets come in right like the day before our meeting. So, you know, Allison and I, more Allison. Have been working really hard to kind of figure it out, to figure out what, what it all means. But let me start with, overall, it's good news. Okay? Particularly from the federal funding. The federal funding, we'll go through the numbers in a little bit, is something that's not annual, and that's really important. And so, this is like a one-time payment, but it's money that as a district we can utilize for many, many things, particularly given the fact that we've been allocating a larger percentage of our reserves to cover our budget. And so these one-time payments that are coming from the federal government from the last two stimulus packages are really good for education in New York State. So, that's, it's, it's good news, okay? So, let us walk through this a little bit. Big Picture just talks a little bit about what was happening at the federal level versus the state level. We're gonna get into this very specifics of the state funding. What our legislature did is they chose not to support what the governor initially done, and that is supplement the federal funds and pull out the state, okay? That's what the governor's plan was, that's not what the Senate and the Assembly in New York State did, and that, so that's really good for school districts, okay, really important. So, if you could, next, next slide.
So, this is just reviewing the governor's proposed budget, and if you'll remember in there, he added in STAR as part of the state aid, which really is already accounted for in our levy, it's, it's part of our levy that's reimbursed to us on New York State, included in our state aid formula. And then he had the CARES Act restoration in there and took it away again under the pandemic adjustment, so it was really a wash. And then this just shows, again, the aidable dollars that he was going to put all together, the services aid as one package, instead of based on your expenditures, he was gonna put it together as an aid package and increase it annually at whatever percent he chose versus what we now get is based on our expenditures.
So, and you can just notice, I'm sorry, just one more thing on that, you can see that that number under the Foundation Aid number was, it was a zero percent increase, okay? We, under the governor's budget. Next.
So this is just showing our, this is the legislative budget that came out last night, so. This shows where they removed the STAR as part of state aid, and they also listed all the aidable expenditure categories, again, separately, those, those that are aided based on your expenditures, I should say.
We understand that you can't see all of those numbers there.
Yeah.
You're gonna, we're gonna be breaking it down in a minute, but just so you understand, this is where it comes from, from the state aid run, okay? And, and what you see here is like part of our, the rest of our county, you can see Lewiston, Lockport, New Fane, Niagara Falls, Niagara field, Niagara Falls, and then North Towne. Now, if you remember that Foundation Aid formula, go ahead, you want, you pulling something up, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna go back to that, that previous slide and just talk quickly about the increase.
Could you just go back one day, not that, it's not so doable, but.
So, the total increase was really about one point six nine million from the governor's executive budget to the legislative budget. It, it would appear like it's more because, or I'm sorry, it would appear like it's less because the governor's budget included that STAR amount, so you have to take that out, because it's already accounted for, like I said, in our levy amount, and it really should never have been added into state aid, so. Once you take that out, you can see that it's about a one point six million dollar increase, and most of that is from, we got like seven hundred ninety thousand dollar increase in Foundation Aid, seven hundred seventy-two thousand dollars additional in building the aid, and that again is because as we're completing capital projects and we're filing the final cost reports, those aids are then being processed at the state level and put into our aid categories here. And then the last piece that increased slightly was the transportation aid, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, not much, but those three pieces are really what added the additional aid.
And, and if you look, so, the number that you can maybe see down at the bottom of our column there, that three point seven three number, you go to the next slide?
So this is just a review of the Foundation Aid that this district, Niagara field, has received over the years. Since the inception of Foundation Aid in two thousand seventy-eight, and you can see the year-to-year differences in the second, the third column, you know, the first column is the fiscal year, the second column is the aid that we actually received, the third column is the year-to-year dollar difference, and then the fourth column would be the year-to-year percent difference.
So, every year you hear us talk about Foundation Aid, them not fully, fully funding Foundation Aid, right, I mean, every year, this is repetitious. The, one of the other good things that happened in this budget cycle was that the legislature said their plan is to close that gap and fully fund Foundation Aid over the, over these three years, including this fiscal year. So the twenty twenty-one budget, excuse me, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, and the plan is this, that for the next two years, whatever the gap is, to give us fifty percent one year and fifty percent the next, to, to complete that gap, to get rid of it, to make sure that we're fully funded in Foundation Aid. That's the plan, okay? What you can see when you look here is how small, like, the increases have been annually in Foundation Aid. And why Foundation Aid is so important is because it's the one revenue source that we receive from the state government that is, you can do whatever you want with. It's not like, you know, so many of these other pieces of revenue, and it's not expense-based. So it's not like we're just getting the money back because of what we've already spent. This is, right, so. And, and you know, if you just look at the last five years, right, two point seven four, two point one one, one point one zero, last year we know it was zero, now it's three seven three. So, that, that's a, that's a good, healthy number, the three point seven three, that's very helpful to, to us as a district, clearly. But when you look at what it was the year before, it was zero, over the last two years, if you divide that in half, right, what do you get, like, one point eight something percent, eight six, something like that, eight six five, is that right? Yes, look, I just, I had it written down, Marissa, I was just trying to impress Dan. Isn't that good, one point eight six five, okay, that wasn't bad. That, that's what it is, right, it's a one point eight six increase over a two-year period. Because last year, what we had to do was we had to apply more of our unappropriated fund bail, fund balance reserves to fill that gap, because the Foundation Aid increase didn't happen. Okay? Yeah. Absolutely, to, to, to fully Absolutely, to fully fund foundation aid, correct. Yep. Well, he and a lot of people have been doing a lot of work, and we usually see him in the summer. He usually comes, we'll see him again. You can thank him personally. Usually like last meeting in June or first meeting, something like that, I think we usually have him, yeah. Next. So, here's what the two federal stimulus package, packages, the second and third, mean to our district. One is the $3.2 million, one is $4.674 million. So, it's a little under $8 million. That's great, fantastic. It's a one-time payment, okay? And there are some expectations as far as how some of it's spent, particularly the second one, okay? We have to kind of get into the details of this. We'll share it a little bit more in a minute, knowing full well that we don't know everything there is to know about this yet, okay? Because it just came out. But one thing I just want to caution, and I want everybody to understand, I think I can do this, is that this is not money that's coming again. You, you're, you should not, and we should not, put this into our expenditure budget. So, we shouldn't, if we're, whatever we use these resources for, you don't put it into your expenditure budget because you're not going to have the revenues in future years to pay for it.
Can I just say, you know, these are not part of the general fund dollars. So, they're recorded completely separately in a special aid fund. So, it's to supplement, not supplant, as you know, Mr. Lawrence was saying earlier. So, we can't, we cannot include these in our general fund budget.
And we will talk about what some of the things that are possibilities. There's a list of things that are possibilities that we can utilize these funds for, right? So, we'll talk about those a little bit more. Go ahead. Yes, as a matter of fact, you're expected to.
Up to a certain year.
Five, it's a, it looks, it looks like to us, five years, including this one. Okay, so four more after this one.
For the rescue plan, I think the first one is...
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right. The first one, I think it's two years.
Right.
So, but, but again, we, we saw some, so on the second one there, we saw some initial documentation that both Alison and I read that we thought we had like two and a half years, in other words, really, to use that up. Now, it looks like we have more. So, we, we're still in the weeds a little bit on this, okay?
They haven't come out with all of the, the application process isn't even out yet. They have to be applied for online, similar to what I did for the CARES Act. Except that these two, we don't have to worry about the non-pubs. There, there's no non-public piece of this from us. However, the S R 2 will still have to be publicly maintained. So, I will still have some sort of responsibility, most likely the purchasing piece of it through us somehow. But, but we're not allocating the funds like I did with the CARES Act.
Which, which is our next slide. Yes. It depends which one we're talking about. So, let us, let us get, we're going, I'm going to show you, right, in a minute. And whenever I say we're going to show you, I mean, we're going to show you what we think we know now, to be very, to be fair. Well, good question. It looks like we can actually apply it to some past, right? Yeah. But again, you know, you read this stuff, and, and it's all written, you know, it's, it's written, thankfully, to provide money, right? Now, they have to get into all the specifics, and we want to make sure, of course, we do it right. So, right, so, I think we're going to be able to recover some funds and spend it on some things that we've already had to spend things on, if, if we need to, yeah. So, let's go to the next one. Alison actually touched on this a little bit more already. So, this S R 2, that total dollar amount, it, we will have to put in an online application, similar to the CARES Act, and it'll still require public control of funds. So, districts may expect to have some level of involvement. We don't know what that is yet, okay? We just don't know what role we're going to have to play for, for public schools. No matter what, these are funds that we will be able to utilize. And they haven't given as much, at least I haven't seen yet, as much direction with this one as they have the second. So, if we go to the next one, okay? This one here, the way that it looks like it's broken down is that you have to use, you have to reserve a particular amount. It looks like it says 50%, okay? And you have to then, on, let's call it academic recovery, helping kids catch up, right? You have to spend 24.8%, it's like almost 25%, okay? On summer recovery and about the, and the same amount on during the school year recovery, okay? That's the expectation. We don't know for sure if it has to be broken down the way that we have it there, if it has to be over four years plus what we're, the year we're in now. But what we do know is that it's, it's expected that about 50% of this needs to be utilized to help kids catch up, okay? Good, right? Okay, any, are there any questions on that? So, it'll be really important for us as we plan how we do that catch-up and recovery to make sure it's not something that we will have to do after these years because the funding won't be there to support it, right? So, that, that's, that's an important piece. What's kind of neat, though, is that when you look at the other portion of this, we've already talked about plans for this school year in the budget process to create something like a reserve for technology. Perhaps some of the funding can go in there because we're looking at a way for capital reserve to fund our technology interests over the years because we know how important that is. But there's, there's certainly a lot of flexibility. They had so many different things listed that we could spend these funds on. We're not going to have any trouble spending the funds over, over the years, okay? Any questions that we can answer? When we get a little bit more information on this, we'll, you know, what we have to do, we have to come up with a plan by July 1st to utilize the funds. Now, it does, it's not down to the cent, it won't be, but it's what sort of things are you going to be doing? What do you expect would be the cost? So, we have to lay out the things that we're going to utilize these funds for, okay? And have a plan. Does, with most of these, just like with our grants, you can amend the document. So, if in three years we decide we want to do something else with some of it, you can do that. But we're going to have to put into writing how it is that we plan to spend the money.
Okay, this is just going through the tax cap calculation again. Our levy limit in the current year is $34,43,515. It's multiplied by the tax-based growth factor, which is provided by New York State. And then we add in our base year pilots in the current year and capital expenditures net of aid. We subtract out, and then that total is multiplied by the levy growth factor based on CPI. Again, that's provided to us. And then we subtract out any pilots that we expect to receive in the forthcoming year and any, add in any available carryover, which we do not have. So, our levy limit before exclusions is $33,256,431. And then I can add in my exclusions, our district exclusion. So, the exclusions we have are relative to our capital expenditures net of aid. So, we can add another just over 1.4 million in exclusions, which brings our levy limit plus exclusions to $34,720,519, or 1.99%. And our prior year, again, was $34,43,515. So, that's an increase of $677,400.
If you go to the next slide, not counting this year because that's just what the proposed amount is. That's what the levy limit is. If you take the last five years, and you can do as many as years as you want, but if you take the last five years, the average, we usually put that out, that's what we shared. It was 1.67% has been the, was the levy average over the last five years.
Right, and just to reiterate, the current year budget is being balanced using just over 2 million in appropriated fund balance, $800,000 in ERS retirement reserves, $300,000 in TRS retirement reserves, $250,000 in workers' comp reserves, and $500,000 in ABLO reserves. So, we're utilizing, in addition to that, you know, we're buying buses using, using the capital reserve. So, and 1.8 million is the total other. So, so 1.8 million plus 2.014 million is what we're balancing the budget with now, which is, you know, important to think about because that number's getting up there now. So, we want to make sure that we have the revenues to support that moving forward.
Oh, okay, so, yes, so that, so I think, I think the question is, was the expenditure budget from one year to the next more than that? And the answer to that question is yes.
But just remember, 1.99% on the levy is only $677,000. That's it. I mean, our budget increases far more than that.
Right, it's just, and I, and what Alison, I think, is saying too, is this. Remember that a portion of our revenues come from the levy, the other portion comes from New York's, New York State, right? And then we have some revenues that come in from grants, okay? Though that makes up really all of our revenues. So, yeah?
But the grants aren't counted in the general fund, so just...
No, that's right, it's the revenues, yeah, coming in, that's right, yep. So, when you, when we look at the 1.99% of the levy, I think, Rick, maybe the best way to answer the question is that sort of, that proposed increase combined with the 3.73% increase coming in on the foundation aid, right? When you put those numbers, those increases together, we're still, our expenditure budget is still above the, the combination of those numbers and will still be allocating from our unappropriated fund balance a significant number of dollars, but less than what we would if we didn't get that 3.73% in and if we don't increase the levy.
Well, I'm getting into that.
It's here, we got those numbers coming up, yep. Go ahead, Dan.
So, this shows our proposed budget amount increase, which the proposed budget for '21, '22 is $79,222,507, which is a 2.73% increase over prior year. But remember, that includes the capital reserve monies that we're using to purchase both buses and the facilities vehicles. And the buses, it's a wash because we've been buying buses all along, but those facility vehicles are in there. And that's kind of bumping up the budget for that year, for next year too, which is increasing that percent. And if you go to the next slide, there's the total budget. And if we take out that 205,000 that we're talking about, which won't cost the taxpayers anything because, again, that's using capital reserve monies. Our actual budget to budget is just over 79 million or 2.46% increase. Last year, I don't have that figured out.
What was the number, you mean?
That was what was budgeted or what was actually used? Yeah, I don't have that in, I have that information right now. I can get it to you.
Oh, we underspent, we underspent the budget. We, right, we did not, we did go into reserves, but we didn't go into reserves near, absolutely, because we held back on spending. My guess is it would have been, we, we would normally tap into the unappropriated first and leave the other restricted reserves where they are.
Well, what happens is I expense it to the reserves, and then they get reimbursed. So, you know, it'll show that we utilized the reserves because the comptroller wants to see that we're...
Because that's how you have to, yeah.
So, then they get reimbursed with any fund balance we have had. And I know we did have some last year that refund, ref... How much did I say?
Refilled, sure.
Refilled the reserves, so...
Oh, I mean, seven, with over 70% is staffing costs and education, right? So, you know, any contractual obligations, whether that be salary, fringe benefits, that sort of thing. Those are, in a service industry, the predominant driver.
And here is just a look at the revenue proposed for next year. So, you will notice the state aid amounts do not match what's in the legislative budget. And, and the reason is because we have to allocate some of those monies back to the Tuscarora School because we get aided for those kids. So, they subtract the aid before they pay us the difference on what we've spent. So, that's why those state aid numbers don't really line up, you'll notice, against the legislative budget because I've had to reduce them based on student count and move a portion of those funds over to Tuscarora. But you can see at the bottom there is where we have the inter-fund transfers. Now, that $800,000 is Greenway money for the Greenway bond to appropriate for that bond, to use those dollars. The appropriated fund balance is at just over 2.2 million. And then the reserve use is below. So, that 1.015 capital includes 810,000 for buses. And then the remainder is for the facilities vehicles. And then the retirement reserves that have appropriated those dollars for revenues to expense from, if we were to expand our full budget, that's where the money would come from.
So, the expenditure budget that we're proposing is $70,222,507. The revenue budget, in other words, the dollars with the new foundation aid, okay? 3.73% increase. And the one point, just so you know, the figure that's used here is the 1.99% takes the revenue to 75,887,850, leaving the gap at 3.334657. Last year, that gap was, what, 4.5 million? Is that where we were at? I think, I think that's right.
Last year, I don't remember this current...
No, 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 la, last year, last year, I want to say we were at like 4.5 million dollars.
It was over four, yes.
Yeah. So, so we were well over four. That's a lot to be appropriating, right? Because if you end up using it all, very quickly you burn those reserves. So, right now, that, that's what that number is with the foundation aid and the 1.99 applied, okay? Other questions on that? Well, yeah, so, so the addition, so what, what happens is when you look at, I think maybe it's even better to look, when you look at the expenditure budget number from year to year and you go, jeez, it's took it through 3.7%. That's because we're buying those new vehicles this year. That bumped up the expenditure budget. Even though we're paying for that out of a reserve, it still has to be included in your expenditure budget.
Now, that's not the reserve amount. That's what I'm appropriating to the budget, to use from the reserve.
The reserves, I think, coming.
Yeah, they're coming up, it's actually more than that.
Yep.
So here it is, right here. So these are our balances right now. At the end of this year, this is what we would have left in the reserves if we were to utilize everything that I budgeted. In other words, if our, if we've expensed our full expenditure budget, what I've appropriated, I've taken out of the reserves and this would be the balance. This does not include anything that would be added back in either. So we will be adding monies back into these because we did get our payment for Tuscarora back. So we, we are going to have money to allocate to these funds, so.
Yeah. Oh, and if I could, just to interrupt this press just for one minute. Thank you to Senator Orr, who again, um, helped, intervened, and very shortly after his intervention, we, we saw that twenty percent that they were withholding for the Tuscarora contract that we have. And we saw those funds. And it was the equivalent of about four million dollars that they were withholding from us. Um, so that was huge. And if there was a gold star to give right now, you, you said it was six hundred something thousand dollars. The workers' comp was silver, little over six hundred thousand dollars. Good memory there, Rick. Yeah. Any questions on these reserves? What's that?
This is in the current year, right? If we were to expense the full budget, because I balanced it with reserves, if I utilized the reserve monies, that's where we'd be. But that's before anything is refunded. And like we've said, we've gotten payment back for the Tuscarora.
Cor- correct. These numbers are all changed already, but you got, but to give you the
This is the low end.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to say, okay?
Correct. Yes. I, I, the way we're reading it now, at least a portion of the third federal stimulus can be used to put into reserves. So that's the way we're reading it now. Absolutely. I, there. Correct. If you remember, we're, in the budget, we're adding additional new reserves because those have been completely expended. That's true too. So the ones that, if they were fully, the ones that have been fully
Right. The two thousand nineteen capital improvements has not been fully funded. So that one, we can still fund.
Put money into.
For about, with about four point three million. And then we have two new reserves that are going to be on the budget vote this year.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
That's right.
And then one of the, uh, reserves on the budget vote is a transportation reserve.
Any other questions on the reserves? Okay. Really important that we show this every year, the fiscal stress. We know where the district was. We know where we are now. So much of that has to do with making sure that we do have, have reserves. If we hadn't had reserves to appropriate the la- especially last year and in, in coming into this year, we would have been in a lot of trouble. Um, think about last year. If we didn't have the reserves, even if we don't dip into them significantly with our expenditure budget this year, if we didn't have those reserves to apply, we would have been cutting these from our program. Right? So, um, the fact that we had those reserves made it so that we could do the things that we've been able to still do, given COVID.
And frankly, because we were able to maintain the four percent unappropriated fund balance, that's what funds the Smart Schools project because that money is all upfront money that we pay out. And I'm waiting for our first reimbursement to come back, but, you know.
Well, a- and, and, and to add to that, in our, in our district particularly, with, I mean, you, you know, every year, it seems like we're behind in payments from either native tuition payments, okay? Or payments to Tuscarora School. If you, if we didn't have the unappropriated fund balance, we wouldn't have the cash in hand to fund those things ahead of time. We'd be borrowing for it. Now, sure, the state would have to pay us back for the money that it cost us to borrow, but it, it affects our rating.
This would change. But it directly affects our fiscal stress. You know, the reason we went up is just that, because it affected our cash flow because we did not have the monies from Tuscarora. That was a direct relation to those increases.
One of the questions I haven't seen the answer to yet, to, today, but maybe Allison, you have. If they changed the unappropriated amount, which right now is four percent, there, if you remember, the Assembly, one of the two, the Assembly of the Senate, one of them was proposing six percent, one eight percent, and I didn't see if that went through, you know? Meeting in the middle at seven percent would have been great. But I, I didn't see if that went through yet. Um, for us as a district, that would be really important because of that outstanding, um, you know, regularly outstanding debt that we incur, that we don't get revenues for in a timely fashion. Any other questions on this? Next? I think that's it. What other questions about the budget? Again, good news. Okay? Good news.
Fully funded, eight hundred and thirty thousand, just over eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
There you go. Think they
So that's probably the current year you're looking at. The one on top is current year.
Yeah.
The one on the bottom is next year. So that was
So that, that's fully funding the hundred and forty-one, um, slots. Just a little over a hundred. Still plenty of, plenty of room for anybody. But, but last I heard, a week after I had heard it, one, it was still a hundred and one or a hundred and thirty, something like that. Great, great question. I'm so glad you asked. Um, so two things. Let me start with the elementary. At their next board meeting, you're going to have a presentation on the elementary, okay? We historically do not have a summer program for elementary, except for if it's for special education students, okay? This summer, we're proposing a summer catch-up program for all of our elementary students who, through their data, fall behind, fall below a certain data point, okay? Or data points, I should say, but a cer- a certain line. We're right now finding out how many of those families would be interested in taking part. We were initially planning to pay for that with some title funds, okay, to make that program run. It's going to run at West Street this summer in the month of August, assuming we get your support. And, um, we may choose to instead switch the funding source for that instead of using the title funds, which we could use for professional development and other things. Maybe we'll use some of this funding that came in from the federal government that's supposed to be used for something like this, okay? We still have to figure that part out, but that's the elementary program. And what I would anticipate moving forward is a program similar to that for the next few years to keep catching kids up in the summer, along with putting together a program during the school year to help kids catch up who have been behind, okay? Some additional supports. What we have to be very careful of is that we're not creating positions that we believe are going to be here forever because the funding won't be. So it all has to be kind of, you know, with the idea of academic intervention, catching kids up, supports, okay? Um, at the secondary level, uh, we are looking to do some, to doing something the, the fourth quarter. There's some talk about some plans to do some things for maybe after-school assistance for our kids, um, to, to catch them up. We have some kids who have fallen very behind, okay? Not just kids who are completely virtual, but especially some of our kids who are completely virtual. You know, think of it this way. We always have some students who are very difficult to engage in the learning process. Now imagine they're not here at all. Right? Um, how hard is it to get them, to hook them, to bring them in? Um, so those kids, w- w- we're looking for a way to try to bring them back. And now knowing that we have a funding source that we can utilize for that, feel a lot more comfortable trying to make it happen.
Now, two questions.
Yep.
Would the parents just have the, the right to say, I want to put them in there? Or is it based on the statistics you have?
Well, we, we would, we would draw a line for the program because it's, again, a- any summer program, any additional program like that, there, there, there's the idea that you're, it's a recovery. It's a, it's a learning and academic recovery, right? Um, at the elementary, it's not credits, but it's an academic intervention. Um, so they would have to meet some bar, but we're, to, to maybe put it this way, we're, we're making sure that bar is pretty high so that many students would qualify for it. Yes, absolutely. Transportation's a hundred percent a part of it. Because if you don't do it, you're excluding some kids. Yep. Question. And, and depending on the time of day and what the structure looks like, probably some type of food snack, something, breakfast, you know, depending. What else? What other questions?
Uh, one of our items for board discussion, it's going to come up, a new business will hold off to the new business. An old business right now, we have the, um, about, question about hockey in there and the information. The proposal for the cost breakdown.
Yep. So I know I provided some information regarding hockey. My recommendation would be this, and we, quite frankly, if, if the board supports it, we, we wouldn't add to the budget for what the equivalent of thirteen hundred dollars. Okay? We would just move money within the budget for the thirteen hundred dollars. The proposal would be this, um, to add a thousand dollars for ice, um, for the, uh, men's hockey program. And then a third of that, because we have a third of the participants for the, for the women's program, a, a third of tho- those dollars, so let's call it three hundred and thirty-three dollars for, um, the women's program for ice time. And the proposal, the, the full proposal was to do that annually, each year for five years. I would not recommend doing that and acting on something like that for five years, right? I think we would, it was something you would act on each year, have the ability to do that. But I think in the first year, um, what that would do is just decrease a little bit the, um, expenses for, um, practice time for the, for hockey. So. I also shared some other, some information with, uh, board members, uh, related to some of the other cost expenses for some of our other programs. I'm certainly willing to get, you know, any additional information that you'd want for that sort of thing. Um, because, uh, over the last five years, you know, we've done a lot of rebuilding in those areas and all of our co-curriculars. And, um, I think we should always be looking at, are we, are we balancing it out? Are we doing it fairly? Are we making sure that we, we're taking care of all of the, the, the students and the, and the different groups? Um, so, there you go.
Uh, there's no action that's needed on that because that's just a budgetary item for you to then
It is. And we would just, I, I just want everybody to, i- i- is, is everybody comfortable with us doing that? Because it's just something that we're going to move for the first year. We'd be moving a thousand dollars. Uh, and then for, for, for men, in the three, thirty-three, thirty-four cents for, for women. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Any other old business this time? Well, I get the new business is a tax level limit.
Sure.
So our discussion of tax levy limit, we have to just set that. And the superintendent has asked us to also take ex- action on the expenditure budget tonight at this meeting. Um, well, for, for that piece, obviously, the tax levy limit is, plays a key piece in there. So I'm opening the discussion now on, uh, what you, about the levy limit. Uh, currently, our levy limit is one point nine nine percent. Uh, we have told the public at a meeting in February that we are not going to pass that to go to a super majority. So it is now time though for us to set what the actual limit will be. Thoughts, comments?
You know, one point nine nine, you know, over five years, I think we've done pretty well. But, you know, you're always, you're always a little concerned about residents. And, you know, not knowing exactly what not one point nine nine to one point six nine means to us, or one point seven nine, or do we leave it at one point nine nine? You know, I, you try to look at all the stakeholders. We need to run a school and the students are number one. Well, I, I just don't want to lose sight of the other stakeholders, including the employees. So I don't know how detrimental it would be to drop it a little bit, and if you think it's going to be, then we'll keep it at one point nine nine. So I'd like to hear some, some other comments.
We've been in, um, what, the one point, um, two point two rate, right?
Just for your discussion sake, Dan, Dan, yeah, Dan can bring it up.
Yeah. So we've been, we've actually been higher than that. We've been, uh, two point four.
Well, I mean, and to go back.
I guess my question is, my thing is, we've gone into our reserves, which is, is something we really need to think about. And to me, I don't know what the difference, like Rick was saying, whether it be one point six nine or whatever, but maybe we can have that number. But to me, it might be advantageous that we just kind of stay there for a year and see where we fall out.
Right. Well, I gotta remember, remind people that those two years that we had the four and a half percent, basically, that was coming off of multiple years of budget decreases. We had a couple of budget decrease years there where we ran a super majority of a twelve percent tax increase because it was making up for the eight to ten years, I forgot what it was, of zero percent tax increases. I mean, you can only live on zero percent for so long before it catches up to you. And I use the example of two thousand sixteen, seventeen, where we actually had a negative tax levy. Um, granted, it was a zero, you know, it's stated zero for our, our, you know, purpose, so we didn't decrease people's taxes in that sense. But, um, it, you know, you, you don't know what the future will bring with that. So I mean, when we are ever, we're putting out a budgetary amount like this, we're increasing, you know, the amount we have. Can remember, this compounds each year. So when, whatever we take off of it this year, if we take something off, you're losing that every subsequent year past that. You know, you can't make that up. And that's what happened previous years when they went there. And then we tried to make it up with nine percent over two years and we saw how well twelve percent went. Remember, that was those days. That was a fun, um, you know, two hundred people at the meeting. So, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with one nine nine. Um, the simple fact that, you know, w- we are weighing in every single thing that's gone on in our district for years and years and years. And now we're to the point where we're paying, you know, we're hitting those reserve funds.
Right.
We don't know if the state's going to come out and say, hey, we're going to be just as generous with foundation aid like they say they are the next year. Because, and this is something the superintendent and I was talking about. You know, if they come out and they say, hey, we're going to fully fund the foundation aid formula, which is another what? Couple million dollars or so for our district. That money, I mean, we can't, it, well, granted, yeah, you can add some to reserves and everything, but you're going to be expected almost to put that, this is what our discussion was, to reduce taxes because that you, you still can't overexpend your budget. You're not going to say, hey, we're going to bring back all these things because as the superintendent always says, can we sustain it? We start putting stuff back with that money. That's, we, we, we're not going to be able to sustain that and, and, and carry it forward. So right now, we're saying, okay, yeah, this, this, next year, if the state comes through with what they're saying, we might be actually looking at a reduction.
Right.
Allison, I follow, did I follow that part, that piece to logically?
Yeah. So, so, well, no, but here, here, can I ask?
I was just going to say, you know, don't forget we're supplementing the, the budget with reserves and fund out. So if we were to get another two million dollars, it would simply reduce the amount we're supplementing.
Yeah.
We'd still be supplementing a couple million dollars.
And, but, and to, and to your point, I, I think, and, and, and Rick's too, is that that you will see some districts on, on that list. And if you went and you looked at all of the districts in New York State, there's districts that, you know, their, their foundation aid number this year is ten, twelve percent. I don't know what their numbers were the year before or five years before that. But if, if we were in that boat, I think it, it's probably a But if, if we were in that boat, I think it, it's probably a little bit different conversation, right? Will we be, and you know, will, will they be, and you mentioned, we'll be disingenuous or not. Will, over the next two years, will we see all of that foundation aid come back in two lump sums? We'll see. And I think that's when you'd have a little bit more discussion, or I'd recommend having a little bit more discussion about it, right? But, you know, the, the fact that. You know, you look at the last five years, um, and you know, if you're counting this coming year, go to six. And, and to Steve's point, a lot of that for those first two years that are on that chart there, we're kind of making up years. And I think you want to be in a place where you're not, you don't. I think ta- people paying taxes, they don't want to see this. They don't want those years where they have these big jumps, right? You, you, you want something that's flatter, that's more even than, you know, because, and, and quite frankly, that, to Jason's question earlier. That's how budgets work, that's how, you know, contracts work, right? They, 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 they tend to go up evenly. When, but when you have the big spikes, that's just never, and, and the big dips, it's just not good for budgeting at all, so.
Yeah, I mean, from sixteen and seventeen till, till present. Considering what the school district does, it's pretty fair. I mean, you can't say it's not.
Right.
You know, I mean.
And you gotta remember last year's, ours, our levy limit was actually like, wasn't it six nine? We, we took some off.
We did take some off yesterday.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
And I think that we did it, there was another year in there, we did it also.
One year it was over, it was like three something and we.
And we, I think, and I think it was a year that was two four nine. I think we actually had almost close to four percent.
Sounds right.
And we went.
I think we were under, under most of them, but.
Cause we were worried there, cause I mean, the thing that mentally people get in their heads is that they heard that tax levy limit's two percent. They hear the tax, you know, the tax cap is two percent. In their mind, that's what they, you put two point four nine, even though that's our levy limit, they're, you're going above the tax cap. You know, they don't realize the tax cap is, is a fluid level for school districts that way.
There's a formula, right?
Right. So, I mean, one nine nine, you know, I, it, I, it's under that two percent magic number that people have in their heads.
Over six years, it's one point four five percent.
Right.
And like I say, next year, we'll see where that ball falls out.
Well, I mean, how much are we owed in fa- in foundation aid? I mean, if you go with.
We were talking about that today, we gotta go back and take a look.
It's like six million, isn't it?
What the total amount is. Again, again, well, we know, they owe twen- it was the last, I knew it was over twenty million, but I'm, they're, they're not even talking about that number. It's not about even getting that back anymore, it's about.
It's what, fully funding.
Fully funding for the, for the initial year, right? That's right. This is, I think it was about two something a year.
The only, the only thing I think we have to be cautious with, even if we're going to do the one point nine nine. You know, she's saying we're supplementing the budget a couple million dollars a year. And, and to Jason's question, uh, we gotta be careful. We're not going to be getting all this aid down the road. And, and, uh, we can't be raising taxes real high. So I don't know. What's causing it to go there? I mean, I know what it is, but, uh, you know, I mean, something we can't just ignore.
That's right. And, and I, and I think this is the, the, the combination of these two revenues, the foundation aid and the, um, the levy. Those two things bring what we're appropriating down, right? It, 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 it gets that to a, a number that's more controllable. And, and, and remember, we're, we're regularly within our expenditure budget, expending money, thank goodness. That some of which is coming from our reserves, like our restricted reserves to buy buses. Okay, that's always in there. Okay, that's always a part of it. So.
And there's things built into the budget too, that we might not necessarily need to spend, you know? So we always have to add extra for, I'll, I'll give you an example, special programs, you know? We get a lot of kids in that have high needs, you know? I have to make sure I have enough budgeted to cover that. And, you know, we've been lucky, you know, so.
Well, and that's one of my concerns for these coming school years. I mean, we've had such an impact with not just academics, but you know, with, with COVID, with the kids not being in school and the mental. Uh, health of, of the children, how many of them may now qualify for an IEP because of that? Um, which could drive up our costs even more for specialized.
To, to your, to your point, you know, I think it's one of the reasons why of the many categories, that's one of the categories that, that, that. Almost eight million dollars can be utilized for.
Yeah.
Right? Again, short term, not forever, um, but, but I think that's, that's a really good point. And. Social workers, counseling services that you would implore i- in the short term, right? They put, put in place additional services in, in, in the short term, maybe utilizing BOSEs. Cause you can add like a point six through BOSEs, you can't go above that. But we could do something like that. Those are things in, for again, in the short term, for students who have struggled social emotionally, that we can help. You know, and those, those are things that we can look at staffing wise, that are not long-term staffing commitments, but short term.
So like one and a half to one nine nine, somewhat acceptable. But I think for future boards, if you start getting into the ten years ago situation. And they gotta start deciding a future board. Two point nine nine or three point nine nine or cutting. You know, you're gonna, and you don't want to cut, or you, you don't want to get into those predicaments, because they're not good.
Yeah, you gotta remember, the years leading into those two, there, there were two hundred cuts that we made.
Minimum.
Yeah, well, that was, those are the years leading, I'm saying, just a couple of years leading into there. There, there, there was more cuts before that, but those two years leading into those two increases is about two hundred, two hundred cuts. Because not being able to make up that lost revenue from those years of zeros.
And most importantly, not having a reserve to fill the gap when the economic crisis hit at that time.
Right.
Gives you that cushion, you're losing that cushion.
So much.
Allison, if we were to go to like a one point five. So that would drop.
Hundred fifty-six thousand, hundred and sixty thousand.
I mean, is that something that we could find?
Well, it's find isn't, it's one of two ways. You either cut stuff out of the budget or you decide to appropriate more from, uh, reserves or unappropriate reserves.
What's the thing with this extra money coming in?
But don't forget, that's not general fund money, number one.
Right, so I guess in a way that.
It's one time, it's not continuing.
Maybe the greater expenses we have because of funding or whatever we have this year.
But that's stuff that we would use that money for, you know, to offset those funds. So in essence, what we're thinking, you know, as we're talking, like some of the expenses, and he had mentioned. That we've already expensed can be used toward, with some of those funds. So what that does is that brings money back into the general fund, which ends up in a fund balance. And then you can put it into, you know what I mean, without cutting anything.
I think with Jason's point.
I, I guess, you know, just. Part of the thinking of, okay, here's the tax from it, we go right to that. I mean, it's a time, I know a lot of the constituents are having a hard time financially. Just even after, after they pay to not have to go all the way to the tax on that.
Well, I think you're.
I mean, a hundred thousand dollars or so on a seventy-eight million dollar budget. I, I don't know, like.
I mean, we have to cut it or we have to apply more reserves somewhere.
Or even savings from this year.
You can, you can, you can always do it. It, I think the question, and, and the thing to think about too, and I, I know Steve mentioned this, and I usually do, is that it's forever. Right? So if it's, if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over ten years, it was one point five million dollars, right?
Forever for the school as well as the homeowners.
No, no, a- absolutely, absolutely.
When you put it in perspective, you're talking a hundred thousand spread about all the time, but was that really a amount to per, per house, pennies, correct?
Probably, yeah, it's negligible probably, because we have four towns. And we have homestead and non-homestead tax rates, so.
Probably pennies per house.
Right. So rather than really risk the future of seeing three percent.
It's still probably, it's still probably a pack tax decrease for town and Niagara, the way, you know, that works out.
Well, and you know, and the other thing that, the other thing I guess I worry about.
This year we're going to be negative.
The, the other thing I, I would worry about is that, um, you know. It, in a year where, to maybe this is to Rick's point, you know, a, a four percent just isn't going to fly. Right? It just doesn't. And even, even if. The calculation, right, the, the, the tax levy calculation says that's what you should be able to go to. Based on. All of the factors. And even if you were at a negative number the year before that, or, or a one percent the year before that. I- in a year where it's one point nine nine. That's not the year where I would say, let's go lower. If this was three percent, you know, this year, if this was four percent, I wouldn't be recommending.
And you did that, that is why we went down to the two point four nine that year. I remember you came to us and said, I just don't feel comfortable putting this amount.
That's right.
Right.
Up. That's right.
I remember that.
And we knew we were never going to see that again. Because those numbers, it, it just, the, there's less comfort with. But, um, I, I just think if you try to hold that number. You know, around that two-ish number if you can. And, you know, it just happened, ours just happened to fall on one point nine nine. Like what, like, you know, that's. That, that'll never happen again either, right? You know?
Last year, if I'm mistaken, we were around two because of the way the voting was, didn't we bring it down to one point four nine?
We did bring it down.
Yeah, we did.
I thought we brought it.
Cause we were, we were unsure of what a, what a mail-in ballot was going to generate for that, because we were very worried about it passing. And if it was a litmus test of exactly how people that don't come out physically to vote ever to the district, um, you know, vote, they, it was.
It was like one point.
It was by, by far a large margin, the largest margin we've ever passed a budget by. I mean, we had about forty-six hundred votes come in, was it? And I think it was almost a four to one yes.
Sounds about right, yeah.
So, and usually it's more of a, like, almost two to one. Yeah, two, three to one, two to one, somewhere in there. So, you know, I mean, even it, you know, we were pandemic stricken with finances last year with, with people's individual finances and. You know, they still, still voted that way. But I understand your, your point on this. I mean, we constantly say, you know, it's money that the district's losing in the future. And, you know, we're going to put it into, if we underspend, we put it back into reserves. We never underspend and give it back to the taxpayers. You know, that's, they never get that, that's, this is the only place where they would get, you know, money back. You know, it just is a question of, well, how will it hit them? At some point though, we may need, with us dipping the reserves, we need to play catch up and say.
Someone tell you too, I know, I mean, the district is checking, right? Enrollment.
Correct, the, the, the numbers, the numbers at the, and, and, and we have, we have reduced class sizes in our elementaries. Over the years, at the secondary level, that bubble is about to move, I say bubble. We're, we're going from about an average of three hundred to about two fifty. That bubble's moving from the middle school to the high school soon. Okay.
But we had that.
Recently or?
What's that? So, so, that, the, the total number, what's our total number? We're at about thirty-four hundred students.
We had the kindergarten bubble though, like, was it this year or the year before?
Yep.
Where we had, we had ad positions, the kindergarten.
And, and then, and I believe, you know, the, with what we see with. If people move into the homes and all the developments that are going in, we should be seeing an increase, right? We should see a jump.
Or COVID, COVID babies. Yeah. I hate to say it that way.
That's, that's a thing.
You, you're going to have.
It's a thing, yeah.
An increase because there was an increase of births during the past nine months.
Yep, 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 so. So we, we have lost sections at the elementary level. Um, as a result, we've moved some people from the middle school to the high school and some staffing, some staffing there. So the question will be, what do we do in the next two, three years at the high school level? How much of that changes? Cause you, you can go two different ways. You can have more offerings. Right, for kids, or you can make reductions. So, you know, and, and. You, we, usually you can do that with, um, with retirements, when they happen in that film. Though, those are all things that we'll, we will certainly be making decisions about in the years to come.
Keeping an eye on it too, is the general world, I'm a question, two percent people kind of having a bond. I mean, just looking forward, maybe, you know, with the extra money we get, we do do the one point nine nine, close to that. Just for next year, maybe we can be in a better, healthier financial situation with maybe our reserves looking a little bit better than they are this year. Think of keeping things, put your reins in next year. I think hopefully.
That's what I'm thinking.
We go till next year and see if that can work.
Well, and you gotta remember, where a lot of the tax, where this revenue is going is to replenish, obviously, reserves too. I mean, because we were saying we're expecting it. You look back at those four point zero, when I, when I came on the board, when Rick came on the board, there were no bus reserves. We had zero left in our capital, capital, um, uh, fund reserve for, for, for buildings. And for the longer, so we couldn't have a capital project because of that. So it wasn't until we started saying, okay, we're going to cut and then build up reserves and then get back into that ball rolling. And, you know, just. I, I don't want to see us have to make a decision on repairing a building or, you know. Creating more class space if we need to reconfigure anything, because we decided we weren't going to bring more money in, you know, through the tax base. Uh, you know, where it, it, it causes us to, you know, to obviously make decisions on. What our, uh, our current, um, you know, building evaluation survey, or building condition survey becomes into with.
Our bus fleet was a mess.
Oh, it's horrible.
They're all old, it was costing so much money. And it's sad when you see three hundred employees, SRP and teachers, minimum. I think we went beyond that, laid off over a couple of years here. It's just devastating. Plus the classes that were lost for the students. So I, I don't want to go back there, that's for sure.
I mean, and the other end of things, you know, controlling spending. I mean. If you're really good with, good negotiations and budgeting, I mean, we've kept the, the budget, you know, there, there's the salary increases in line, you know. At, at a very low minimal level. You know, you've, you've hired only where necessary, you know? And still allowed us to increase trade class, um, offerings to the high school. You know, for, for electives and stuff like that. So, I mean, we're doing the right things in budget. And I always say, I, when taxpayers say, you know, well, there's always fat to be trimmed. I'm like, well, yeah, I mean, not really. You know, you, you don't start, the, the fat's gone out of this, it's been gone for ten years. You know, we're, whatever we cut now is affecting programs, affecting kids directly. There's no, you know, magic area, can you just say, hey, yeah, we have all this money right here, we can cut because we don't really need this. Everything we have right now, we need. It's, it's the, it's the, it's the school experience now for, and I'm going to tell you. The minute the kids are coming back live and they need, they're going to need extracurricular, we may need more. Because they haven't had the interactions, they, 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 I know these kids, just talking to my own kids and the kids in the neighborhood, they crave, they can't wait to get back here. Or maybe not my son, who's first, first, he loves to have a little thing, but.
Additional funding, but there'll be things that we're going to have to spend to get back to normal.
True.
You know, like you say, with the kids, getting them back to normal. It's not going to be, you know, just not going to be a switch. It's going to cost, we may have to put more.
Well, and, and I would say that, yeah.
Like you say, summer school training, school, you know, stuff like that, it's, it's, might have to happen.
Well, I mean, and this is a discussion I was, I, I had with one of the other board members. You know, we talk about summer school, we might need to have programs to get just kids be, be able to socialize and back together. There's been so many kids who have not had that social, be socialized through here and not had the physical interaction.
Right.
I know some of the kids feel weird when they're around with our kids then. You know, we, our summer school might, might not just be academics. It might be the social, emotional summer school piece that brings kids back and say, hey, let's do some kind of. Exactly, you know?
Master community ad, sure.
Yeah.
Now, to Jason's point, I mean, we all would like to say, reduce the tax levy and the money and. I think we're really in uncharted times still. We can't decide between three feet, six feet barriers. We're going back full-time, we're not going back full-time. And I just, the price of fuel, you talk about transportation, I mean, that's trending up. I mean, what else is going to trend up for this time? You know, it's just, I think we've cut ourselves short to go back on it. I don't like seeing increases to taxpayer myself, or anyone, but. I think things are really unsettled this year. To get a clearer look at the mindset, and see what we're having next year, definitely a better idea, put it back in full-time. Are there kids that are not going to want to come back? You can't mandate them, can we, can we not? I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Big, big questions, is what you're talking about, yeah, yeah, sure.
Above our pay grade. Above your pay grade actually too.
The, the, um, you know, and, and one, one of the things that I think is important, and just touched on by a few people, so I just want to comment on it. You know, when, when we look at our, as an example, our high school, you know, w- w- we've built back that program, we've added some electives. I would argue there's, there could still be more. We still have more kids in the study halls than we'd like, right? There's, um, there's. Um, there's, um, there's, we have still somewhat limited AIS, now Economic Intervention Services, sorry. Well, those intervention services with the monies that we have that are supposed to be used for that from the federal funds, that'll help us big time for a handful of years.
Right.
Okay, three, four years, shouldn't say full handful, right? But that, that'll dissipate at some point. So when you, when you pull down on the revenue here, those are the sorts of things that we'll have to consider having even less of, not more of. You know, so I, I think we've, with various, what I would consider modest increases in the levy, we've been able to add quite a bit back in the district over the last handful of years. And, um, you know, I think that, you know, if you pull it all away from that one point nine nine, you'd be taken away from that, that's all. So.
Anything else down at the end of the table?
Last year's levy, actually, the current year we're in, the levy, uh, limit was two point seven nine percent. The board approved one point four nine, which was a difference of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars. And just quickly, using the current year assessed, assessed values of properties and stuff in the district, if we were to go to one point five percent instead of one point nine nine, it would save people anywhere from eight cents to per thousand to a high of, uh, fourteen cents per thousand on a homestead property.
By the way, Dan, I like study halls in my time. Study halls.
I, I think, I think, I think study halls are important. I would never say you shouldn't have, but you shouldn't have too many of them.
Okay, Steve, we have to vote on this.
That would, just, that's twenty-six dollars a year on a two thou, two hundred thousand dollars estimate. I wish. I lost twenty bucks and someone found it, so. Try to make that back up.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly consequential.
Yeah. Well, like I said, town and Niagara is gonna make out, they'll be, no.
Well, town and Niagara, they're not assessed like you.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, for me, this number would be about ten bucks.
Yeah. Yep. I, I know, I have. Mr. Back reminds me that all the time, with the town of Weefield, you know, how that works in the town of Weefield, so. All right, um, well, I'll call for a motion then to set the tax levy limit at one point nine nine percent. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion of that? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, standing, motion carries. I'd like to also make a motion to set the expenditure budget at seventy-nine million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. Moving seconded, any discussion of that? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post your standing, motion carries. Can we get that to a couple more decimals though? Can, you know, so we know exactly the number sensed with that too? All right, um, any other new business at this time? Um, just, board member comments then, cause there's no one on the meeting for Zoom. So, um, just the one thing to piggyback on the, the discussions of, of graduation from the superintendent. I know a lot of people like also wanted to have an answer as soon as possible and they have a decision and hear that. Just remember with the ever-stating, ever-changing state of rules governing the, the COVID and gatherings and everything, with us making this, if the, the district made a, a decision so early and said, this is what we're doing, and then all of a sudden something changed, we don't, we, we really, we wanna have as many rules, restrictions lifted before we make a decision as possible. Um, and that's the key thing for a lot of people to realize that, hey, let's wait till we see what kind of restrictions keep being lifted. And as you see with our governor, it could be, you know, something can happen during the week, and all of a sudden, there's a whole bunch of open restrictions that are gone. Um, so we wanna just keep that going, and I know that, you know, come the end of April, we'll have a better picture of things, beginning of May, so. Um. Oh, we, it's still, it's on the table still, we haven't approved that yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I, I got a text from him too. It, it, John, the rea, the reason you're, um, we had added it last year, so it was bef, when you were filling in in that capacity, it didn't exist.
Okay.
Yep, we added it last year. So Steve's memory was the right one, that we had so many extra kids and we, we, we actually started it last year. Yep.
All right, did I call for a motion to accept item number seventeen in the, oh, actually, for all those in favor of, uh, can say yes, uh, if they approve the number seventeen in the personnel budget?
Yeah.
So all those in favor say yes? Um, anyone who opposed? Okay, good. Now that passes then. Thank you for reminding me on that one. We would have left here without proving that. That's it. No head, no head coaches for certain sports. Um, any other board member comments at this time? Discussions? All right then. Um, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post your standing, motion carries. We're adjourned. All right. I'm, I'm supposed to ask you guys.